Good evening. This time I'll welcome each and every one of you to the Martin County Board of Commissioners and Board of Education, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty. I call my board to order. It's time. And the Martin County Board of Education is called to order. All rise, Mr. Scott, releasing the pledge.
And the commission of the name is to release the interpr.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, in whose wisdom and liberty we trust.
Join the prayer, please. Father, have mercy upon us today. Thank you for the many blessings of life and the special for our salvation and our next, give us of our sins. Thanks for just now, Lord, when we enter into this meeting. Give us clear hearts and minds. Let us be mindful, Lord, that all that we're doing here is to benefit, in this case, the children of our county. Let's be mindful of that, and let's execute our duty as we should, Lord, with the cross and prayer.
Amen, man. At this time, we'll go to item one, and I ask that the Board of Commissioners approve. Approve the agenda for tonight.
Much to approve.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, if you know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who vote aye, aye. Motion carried. The motion from the Martin County Board of Education to approve the agenda.
Will it?
Look. Moved then second to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved, thank you. At this time, I'm ready. We'll go to item two, and I'll ask County Manager James Bennett to come forward, please.
Good chair, and Martin County Board of Commissioners, and school board realize that you have a new superintendent that's on the rise, so the thought might be very big, not only the school board, but new school board members as well. But I would say can't give these to this new school board member and not give one to every school board member. So I see after what she said, and so with that, do you, if you will, please?
One of you guys stay dry. You get it.
Yes, sir.
He said, listen. You know, probably her ID right.
And we realize that you have a new finance manager and HR department as well, so there we are. There we go. And with our citizens. Surprise, sir. So again, Chair, that was one thing that board want to do, we show appreciation. All, thank you, board. We appreciate it.
Dr. Decker, we're ready to do a presentation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, I assume everybody can hear. Thank you for the opportunity to come in this evening, discuss what the board has put together, Martin County Board of Education has put together for allocations for next year, what we're looking at trying to accomplish as we go through. When I remember Mr. Bennett when we started this, he had some general questions that we talked about, and I thought that information that we talked about that day, might be a good place to start that out this evening. So in addition to the capital outline and current expense allocations, there are a couple of other sheets that are in your packet that I'd like to draw your attention to as we go, as we go through. The first has Martin County Schools facility ages, single sheet that looks like this should be in your packet when you're doing it. I've noted over the years that when I talk to folks about schools, I refer to something like Riverside High School, Paul Williamson High School, and say, well, that building was just built. As if it's new, why do you, why do you need to spend money on this or that or the other thing? And so I think, I think it helps take a while to look at exactly what the buildings were utilizing at the moment and how old they are. Central office building is example, is now eighty-seven years old, the major part of it. Second part is sixty-nine. We're looking to replace that as we go through in terms of doing it. In terms of the schools, you'll see that most of them were constructed, and major buildings were constructed in the fifties and the seventies. Primary reason for that in those particular years, the state had statewide bond referendums that were passed to help construct schools across the state. It was a big help to counties in terms of catching up with facilities at that time. They gave us a lot of money then, but they've not done that again since then. So we've ended up with a lot of buildings that have put some age on them as the years have gone through. But again, it's just for your general perusal in terms of doing it, looking at things into there. The second sheet that I had actually dealt with budgets and other things, that says Martin County Schools two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three budget in terms of doing it. One of the discussions that Mr. Bennett and I had, Mr. Bennett asked about, for example, was our fund balance, what approximately it was, and what it represented in terms of expenditures. So in terms of our total budget, if you look at it this year, we have just over fifty-four million dollars. Ten million of that, or ten point, almost ten point five million of that, ESRA funds. I've taken those out because they're not a normal reflection year to year of what we would expect to have in the past or going forward, to say expire in September twenty twenty-four. So it puts us really at a revised budget of forty, almost forty-four million dollars in terms of what goes through. We have about five hundred employees, full of our time, which I think makes us one of the larger employers in Martin County in terms of, our annual payroll is about thirty-two million dollars. So the monthly payroll that comes in is about two point six million dollars per month. Salary as a percent of benefits in terms of that forty-three million dollar, forty-four million dollar budget, actually seventy-three percent of it is actually taken out of salaries and benefits before we do anything else to go through. A lot of the rest of it is fixed utilities costs and other fixed costs that we have to go through that we don't control. Our local current expense budget is just over seven million dollars. The fund balance that we had as of the beginning of, end of June last year was about three point eight million dollars. The school board allocated eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, or eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, rounded up of that fund balance to balance out this year's budget, which leaves us with an uncombered balance of about two point nine three billion dollars. If you look at that as a relation to the local budget, which a lot of folks tend to do, it's about forty percent. But if you actually look at it in terms of our entire budget, which is what it needs to cover in terms of emergencies and other things to go through, it's about six point seven percent. There is no recommended or required amount for school systems as there is for counties. As I understand it, the county things in North Carolina said it's about seven percent of the entire budget, so we're in that same line in terms of going through, and we're aligned with what most school systems have that are fiscally responsible. There was a question about district administration and how much that takes of the budget that we have. Looking at the folks that do the district, we have basically ten positions that I would call district administration, and on the back of the sheet, it lists what those are if you were wondering whether, what we have in the category gives them that thing. It comes out to be about one point two million dollars or two percent, two point seven percent of the total budget in terms of going through. Any questions or comments about that before we go into the next section? Thank you. Now, there's a question about ESRA funds, and that's something that we, that we pay attention to, and I know that you all do too, in terms of the funds that you have. ESRA one was totally expended, none of that was returned. For ESRA two, we currently have about, we have about a hundred and sixty-three thousand, that's scheduled to be paid out in May of this year as part of staff retention bonuses that have been part of our plans for ESRA since it came out. The ESRA three money, it should be ESRA three, I apologize, expires nine thirty twenty-four. We had nine million of that, we've already expended one point eight of our, excuse me, one point seven million. We've allocated the additional seven point four million to projects as they go through this year. As those projects are being bid, we then go back to the board. If a project comes in under budget, then we realize, allocate that money to a different priority as we go through. But all of it will be expended by the time we get to September twenty-four, so that it does not end up going back to the government. Questions? If not, we'll move on with your permission. I'd like to start, if I can, with the capital outline and budget request. You have two packages, one is current expense and the other is capital outline. I would note that some of the projects that are included here have been brought up year after year, and we just haven't gotten to them yet, so some of them have come to, as we go through, and I'll highlight some of those as we go on. For Williamson Primary School, in terms of looking at the needs of that particular campus, there's a lot of things for whiteboards and tables and chairs. We need to replace the intercom system, these buildings are older, the original intercom wiring that was put in place, no longer functions in the software systems, they're not, can never be kept up, so they need to be replaced. We're looking at Wi-Fi solutions for those as opposed to hardwired solutions, because it's cheaper and we can get it done in a more economical place. We have trailers that are used at the school for classes that have been in use since I know, two thousand, when I first came, first, when I came the first time. They've now, they've now gotten to a point where they cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a piece. And behind Williamson Primary School, we have, had for a long time, a problem with water running through with our property and adjoining properties, and the drainage tile that goes through there, breaking down and sucking the soil out from the top, causing sinkholes that go through in terms of doing it. We have engineers back from the state, we're working on that again at this point, see if there's some way we can solve that problem, both for ourselves and for the adjoining property owners. The line actually goes right down to the property line as it goes through. I think it was put in by the state years ago, it just got to the point where it's breaking down. For EJ Hayes, battery backup to the intercom, you can see that as we go through a lot. Since we're running things off of Wi-Fi a lot now, when the power goes out, our systems tend to go down. If we still have students in school that we need to discharge at that particular time, if we need to get notifications out to parents, we're looking at putting battery backups into all the systems that will carry us for at least thirty or forty-five minutes. So if something happens to the power, we set a way to communicate for a period of time before we remove cell phones. Playground equipment for the elementary schools needs to be replaced. Tile replacement is actually in the hallways. We use a lot of ESRA funds to take carpet out of classrooms, replace that with tile, and that worked out really well. Problem is that ESRA funds do not allow us to replace tile with tile, because it doesn't have the same health benefits as the other. So this is a normal replacement as we go through due to the age of the facility and the age of the tiles that's there. At South Creek Elementary School, you notice projects, again, the main things are, again, playground equipment, battery backup systems, and the night clocks for the hallways. Those clocks went off of our normal system, the intercom type system, so that system is breaking down, so we have a lot of clocks that have different times or no times. We're looking for a Wi-Fi solution for that also, because we can't find one, so we can hire a hardwired back in. Any questions at this particular point? I'll just keep going if I may. James Elementary, you'll see the same issues coming up again in terms of the intercom system and the backup for fencing, run the backup for the player here for the students to keep them going out past that point. That's one that we can't handle, this for several years, just simply have not gotten around getting yet as the, and to cover the expenses at the end of the year. South Creek Middle School, again, the intercom system and a hundred and fifty thousand. We have a second? I'm sorry.
I have a question for you.
I apologize.
Jamesville Elementary. How many students do we have here?
At which school?
Jamesville.
At Jamesville Elementary?
Yes, sir.
I think I had that here somewhere, I think they have around two hundred if I remember correctly. Actually, I thought I could see where I written that down, but I don't seem to find it at the moment.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to notice your question when you asked, sometimes I get moving on.
Oh, you're fine.
Thank you. At South Creek Middle School, the major project is Phase Two, the roofing project. We did the first part this past year, our schedule to take place was just under bids, so we'd like to finish that in terms of going through. South Creek High School, and I remind you, looking at these amounts, South Creek Middle and High is the same facility, just two different schools in the same building, therefore we lumped some of these projects into the high school as opposed to distributed and going through. Entrance door security, one of the issues that we have in several schools, you, we have, front doors are locked and they're on the buzzer system, but once somebody walks into the school, they're in school. There's nothing direct to immediately to the office or keeps them from taking a couple steps and going down the hallway. So we're trying to look at options that would increase the security of the buildings so that when someone entrance, enters, they've got first, the first query, but then you get them into the office before they have access to the rest of the school. And again, you'll see this in several buildings as we go through. Refurbish the athletic tracks, this has been an issue with the community, one that I've heard about all year since I've been here. I don't think I've heard much about some of the other things in the buildings actually as I have, tracks and folks using them for walking on. Those were again built in the nineteen seventies, they were state of the art when we built them, but they're breaking down over time, and at some point will need to be replaced. It's an expensive project. Repaving the parking lots and replacing window panels that have worn out over the years, and air starts infiltrating in, which increases seating and cooling costs in terms of operating the building. Questions? Going on to Rogers, line replacement, blackout shades on rooms, there's nothing there, we've got that distance space, remember to go back to that. One of the issues that we have in terms of our security protocol and the running systems is, if we have an intruder on campus, one of, one of the things we're supposed to do is block all the shades down with the doors, so if somebody's walking through, they can't tell if someone's inside. Those shades have to meet the fire code, which we've had trouble, people trying to make them while walking from other places. We found a distributor that makes them custom made tour schools, they meet all the standards that are required in terms of fire safety. So we're looking to replace in all the hallways, all the classrooms that look out of the hallways, putting these safety shields in, so that if something happens, they can pull it down, it makes it much harder for folks to tell whether that room was occupied or not. Bus parking lot, the intercom system again for the same reason, and again, window, the windows in Rogers are the same as the ones at South Creek Middle High School and need to be replaced. That's another one that's been on the agenda for several years and has been better down every year as we've gone through in an effort to balance the budget. Riverside High School, you'll see the issues again, the refurbishing of the athletic track again is at about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The other, the other issue that's critical, getting critical at this point, is replacing the exit platform and second, second floor of the building. For those of you who have been there, the back of the building that goes up to the science wing, there's a metal set of stairs coming down, which is a fire emergency exit that's there. That's been in place since the nineteen seventies, it's beginning to rust. We've had engineers come and look at it, is it safe at the moment? But they're, they're advising us it needs to be replaced in terms of its continued life of usage, and that'll be about eighty-five thousand dollars. Riverside Middle School, which is one of our known, is the newest facility, they think that they would like it's commercial lawnmower, they'd be split probably with the high school. District-wide safety projects, as we mentioned a few minutes ago, are the blackout shades and handheld radios, so that we can have folks in different parts of the building communicate with each other. We're looking to standardize the radios and stock them in-house so that we don't have different versions used in different schools, and we can more quickly entertain them when necessary. Nothing for the transportation department at the moment. In maintenance, we have a number of things, LED lighting upgrades, again, save energy. Looking for a metal storage building in terms of storage stuff, and getting rid of some of our older buildings, we've also lost a lot of our storage capacity. This storage building would serve both maintenance and food service in terms of storing their things that they had. We need a scissors lift to reach some of the higher areas we have in the schools. If you notice as you walk in the outside, the core arc around here, the roofs are fairly high, so they need something to change the main thing, those areas. Rest of them are all ongoing things for ground site restoration, based equipment and small roof repairs category. For the central office, I noted at the beginning, we're in the old school's building that was there, been around for eighty-seven years. We have area on the end of this building, as far aside, that we were forming the leasing, Mr. Chesson, that he's been longer using, and a place, location that we have, their clientele is going down in the leasing at the moment, and the leasing expires in the next year. What we'd really like to do is move the central office facility over here with all the plates over here in one place, so that we have everything in one particular thing. We're looking at doing the majority of the work ourselves, which is basically the cost. We need some engineering work and architectural work just to make sure that we follow the standards. We're estimating a cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we do it and bid it, so hopefully that will work through. New roof for the central office, again, at the area on the end of this building, it's down there, that roof is also leaking. This building was redone, the only part of the roof that was fixed is the ones that house students, we used lottery monies to do that. For these other portions of the roofs, the lottery funds are not available, we're told, because they're not student-centered spaces. You can only use lottery funds for student-centered spaces in terms of doing it, so that's an extra forty-three thousand dollars. We're looking for some big furniture for this campus. One of the things about being successful, we're getting more and more good students over here every semester, is that keep building, we'd like to add some more furniture so we're not bringing used things in, mix in with the newer furniture that we already have in place. Martin County Economic Development lease. The board, several years ago, signed the contract with Economic Development leasing the end of this building to them, so they, they have that at a set price a year in terms of going through. In, in doing that lease, we agreed to do the maintenance and also the custodian work for the building, and agreed to do some of their IT services. To be very honest, that we're, it's going to cost us to do what's needed to do. Roof there leaks also, there'll be seventy-five thousand dollars to fix it. We're losing about thirty thousand dollars a year between what we're getting from Economic Development in terms of rent that they pay and the services we're providing, so that's a thirty year, that's about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar loss every year, looking forward over the next several years. So initiated discussions with Economic Development that go back, and re-looking at that lease, see if we can arrange it so that we're not paying for Economic Development out of the school system in terms of making that work. The auditorium at Riverside High School, the HVAC system needs to be replaced, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And we replaced the seating in the carpet, carpet's beginning to fray in some places, again, it's been there since nineteen seventy-four. It's used a lot extensively by Martin County Schools and the community. It's an extremely high price tag, one of the reasons that we've been told that it'd be that high. And talking effects, in order to replace the carpet, you better come in and remove all of the seating that's in there, that's been in place since the nineteen seventies. A little hesitant to guarantee that you remove it without damaging some of it, once you're getting it out. Then they have to replace the carpet, then they have to put that seating back in, assuming we use the same seating. But to be honest, it doesn't make much sense to replace all the carpet and then put the seating back in without doing something, refurbish the seating at the same time, since it's just as old as the carpet is. So we end up with a bill of about five hundred thousand dollars to do that. In terms of technology, we're looking at district terminals. We're looking at standardizing the order of our computers and computer systems so that we, we can keep track of what we have and what's available at a given time. On the top of the next page, instructional TV and equipment, the network information systems or the software that runs our system, those are yearly leases, so fifty-five thousand dollars a year each year. And then we replace teacher laptops on recycling, on recycle basis in terms of going through. Child nutrition services, convection oven, or ovens for cafeterias, food holding cabinets and sinks and fixtures. And then the other issues that are here is the roof over the IT department, which again is on this side of the building, it's a part of the roof again, it's still leaking, we could not use lottery funds to fix it. Insurance and deductible equipment and contingency brings the total amount to five point three, almost five point four million dollars in terms of what we, board has identified in terms of needs at this particular time. I'll entertain any questions or move ahead with the current expense if that's, if you're heard of Mr. Bennett, Mr. Eaton. Thank you. And putting the end of the current expense budget. I guess the only thing I would say, the good thing is the state is raising salaries for teachers and public school employees. Bad thing is, state is raising salaries, the teachers and state employees. The state covers the cost of the raise in salary for those folks that it, that it pays for, so for teachers that are paid for by state teaching positions, if the state raises the salary, then they all, they have that salary scale and we get the money to pay the state-based teachers to raise. For teachers that we have, we pay out of local or federal funds, that isn't the case. So when the state raises the salary, those lot, those money allotments do not necessarily go up with them. As a result, salaries keep bringing upon the local budget in terms of making it work. Same thing is true for support personnel that we have, our custodians, maintenance workers, folks that work in the offices, this is a set dollar amount we get per student. When they increase their salary, they don't increase, necessarily increase that set amount per student, so that the, the cost of the salary increase actually is passed on to the local district. North Carolina has a rather unique funding model, and that's part of it. We're expecting an increase in the retirement rate up to about twenty-six percent. Currently, it's about twenty-four point five percent, so whatever someone's salary is within the district, the district system is required, but twenty-five, four percent right now, twenty-four point six percent, or five, excuse me, thank you. And as a matching part of that, we pay the health insurance cost, which is about seventy-eight hundred dollars, and we're looking at about a three percent increase in utilities and insurance for the coming year. So those are the basic assumptions that we use when we put this together. At this point, the salary raises, retirement and the health insurance, looks like we were fairly close to what at least the House is discussing, we're not sure, not sure what Senate is doing. So the first part of that in terms of regular instructional, some locally paid teachers and the costs that go along with that, again, supplements, employees, social security retirement, and staff travels that goes through, there's increases of about two point seven percent. The second thing, supervisor coordinators, as a part of those district level supervisory positions, at this point, we're looking, we put them in different places as we go through, as depending on what funds are available, we're looking at costs of about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for next year with salary increases that are projected. The one issue in this is where it says retirement other, where it says a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That actually is part of the settlement that we're waiting, we're waiting for the state to make a decision on, with retirement pay to folks who retire, they're charging back part of their retirement cost to school systems and local governments and municipalities. This goes from several years ago, we're hoping that soon, sooner or later, get resolved, but it's a, it's a standing point that we have to have in the budget in case it comes out not to our benefit. In the second, the section below that where it says subface, it says custodians, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, but nothing in the budget for this year. Reason that that's there is we're moving these folks, when pandemic started, we and most school systems, and I'm sure the county to some extent moved some payroll that they could, folks who would work on buildings, into ESRA funding, so we did that to save money for what we have in the state and local federal. It's time to start moving those folks back into, into the local budget so that we can account for those, not all at one time. So this is about half of what we have, along with retirement and hospitalization that we go with that. At the top of the next page, you see page two, says salary studies, office personnel, these are the secretaries, bookkeepers, and finance, this one is broken out, you see it's a cost of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Again, when the state, state has salary scales for state employees, generally speaking, people expect to put on that scale and every year move from one step to the next as they go through. Problem is the state doesn't fund those scales, so when they increase their salaries or they increase the amount on the scale, they don't always give us enough money to cover those increases. So we hired someone five or ten years ago, we put them on the scale where they should be coming, as they walk into the school system. When they walk in, they're probably getting paid more than somebody who was there for ten years, who'd just gotten salary increases but not steps up the salary scale. 10 years, who had just gotten salary increases, but not steps up the salary scale. That person who came to us five or six years from now, now has had somebody coming into the office to work with them, and they end up in the same position. New person coming in is actually making the same, a larger salary than the person that's been with us for five years. Because the person that's been with us has gotten their year-to-year raise, they've not gotten the salary step raises that's gone through because the state doesn't fund it. So we end up with an inequity between where folks are working. We tried to address this back in 2000, about 2007, 2008. The commission, you all as a group, were very helpful to us in trying to face that in over a couple of years, and we made some progress. Then like most things, money became tight. It kind of dropped by the wayside, and we're back in a pickle again in terms of employing folks. Questions? All right. School building administration, we have a $10,000 charge. It's not anything this year. That was actually a contract position. We had a principal vacancy. Someone filled in in Forrester in summer to open school. AP intern, this is new program at East Carolina, East Leadership Academy. It's a provincial fellows program. We're actually, we have one, we actually have two individuals. We have been selected to participate in that. They go through a two-year program, get their administrative degree. Folks from here in Martin County that we hope will stay in Martin County and become principals and future leaders in the district. Going back to this page, the student records increases from 10,000 to 30,000. We have scanned the records for a couple of years. We've added in the budget, haven't done it. So we're trying to catch up, to scan the student records as they go, they go through, and also meet requirements of transcript availability for students when they go off to school. Non-distributor benefits in the next section is things like health insurance that we're paying the folks in the system in terms of going through. Workshop expenses are minor things, we could move off to something else. At the bottom of things, it says teacher assistance, it's worth that $52,000. Several years back, when the state cut funding, as they, you know, them times, they cut the allocation for teacher systems. Choice before the board was either to do away with the positions or reduce the amount of time that teacher systems were employed. At that time, if I remember correctly, even though I wasn't here, I'd just left, I think the board trimmed 10 days off of the employment of our teacher assistants in order to keep more people employed. Board now wishes to go back and start adding those back in. So they did that temporarily last year, and we'd like to continue that and see if at some point we can get them back up to the 10 days that we cut years ago in terms of working. We end up with this during the year, we have workdays or things with parents coming and teacher assistants, or even tell them to stay home because they can't commit and volunteer with their job. At the same time, we're not, can't afford to pay them to be there that day. We'd like to take care of that and get it fixed. Page three, then you see, starting with general expenses, credit and routine. You know, charter school payment, which has gone up over the years, snapped to about 1.2, almost 1.2 billion dollars, we're projecting for next year. They sold a number of students in the increase in reimbursement rates for those students. The less is there, no substantive differences in the cost of their community here. Going on to page four, are there questions? R T C is the matching amount we pay for that program. That program has done an excellent job over the years. It serves both Riverside High School and South Creek High School. It's part that we're paying for the salaries and then also trying to cover some of the field trips and supplies for that particular program. We're not doing it in the past, it would be helpful to cover. Transportation salaries are, that's actually a contracted service, transfer a particular student that we have. And they go down to the bottom of page four, these are routine expenses from year to year and have not substantially changed. We're going to drop, we are fortunately going to drop on page five. You go halfway, about halfway down, you see superintendent search. The board has already finished that process fortunately, and I think most of you met Dr. White. I think that was a successful investment in terms of what we're doing. We won't need that this year, and it's my sincere hope that we won't need it for the next seven to 10 years in terms of making it go through. Then down at the bottom of this, there's a larger charge of $636,000. That is the rest of the employees that we fitted in the same issue that I went over earlier with our bookkeepers and other functions front offices. That's all of our other non-classified employees. On page six, athletic supplements. Middle School's not, we're cutting that, we're just simply changing the funding source with the change oversight over that program. Then we got my page out of my, page seven. Page seven is electricity and T L Ds, those are all fixed costs. We're looking at a normal increase of those as things go up. They're over there, everybody else, salaries for maintenance, again, it's a major expense in that particular area. And going on to the next page is the range of requests, which go up to the, I would like to point out the last one, they say water testing samples. This again is one of those fixed costs that we have had control over that the state passed a law saying all schools shall test for certain chemicals in the water every year, and send them off to certain certified labs. That shall test did not come along with a money allotment to make that test happen. For the first year, we expected to be about $8,000. It could increase as time goes on, particularly if it turns up anything as they go through. Anyway, that brings us up to about $8.9 million in terms of what was identified in terms of our current expense costs. I'll be glad to entertain any questions. Argue me that I will move the floor back. I said, barring any questions, I'll, you'll go back.
Yes, I'm the chair. Dr. Daley, we show that basically we have about three more years, fiscal years of Riverside Middle School to be paid for.
Yes, sir.
We show that basically we have about three more years left of payment on Riverside Middle Schools. And currently, we're spending about $937,000 in cost per payment and about $71,000 on interest paid there. So according to what I'm showing is that fiscal year '24, '25 and '26, and that should be paid for there.
I think that agrees with what they're saying, yes. And finally, the second, I think, I think during our discussions, we're paying the principal payment back in using lottery revenues. And I think a lot of the other expenses are coming out of the Article 40 and 42 shell segments that are academically designated for public schools.
And I believe you got a paper coming up, Grand bit nine thousand, they're about in May. It goes on the reimbursement, which has been, in the past, been $719,000. We paid that two times in November and in May. So the patient in May, $359,000, they're about, should be coming forth there. Last year, board commissioners gave $100,000 which is to us to be used for salaries up, like bus drivers, custodians.
Correct. And again, that was, when that was given, we certainly appreciated it suddenly. It goes into one of those issues that state giving us an opportunity and state going to cost. State last year raised the minimum wage for all public school employees to $15 an hour, or 4% or whatever was greater. So for most of our non-certified, including bus drivers, cafeteria workers, some of our office personnel, teacher assistants, we're below that $15 an hour threshold. And the increase to $15 an hour, which we had no choice but to do, which was mandated by the Assembly, is greater than the 4% increase that is projected for everyone else. So what you gave us was very helpful in terms of covering that particular hole.
Yeah, I relate to that because we actually have competing folks in DSS and in public schools as well, a tax payment of about $15 now.
I understand a lot of folks are doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, we have, we have a unique, as I mentioned before, a unique system of governance. State provides the majority of our funding, and that's 65, 66%. So when they mandate, given issue to come through, we don't really have a choice but to follow suit.
And this is probably the last question, but do you have any idea as to the number of students that leave public school to go to charter schools?
I don't have that number of them.
And last, last month, it was 572 that were paying for charter schools.
Total, how many students?
We had 2,300, we had 2,300 in systems done. So the cap, that'd be 2,400 and 500 would represent that.
Has that trend continued in the last five years, increased?
I'll be very honest with you, I have a rigid trend. I'm not taking a time to look at trend. I think it's a better condition. I think every year, let them know to graduate out of that school or play somewhere and come again. I've actually not gone back to undo all that, so that's an estimation on the heart.
So there are two months, seven, four million systems allocated. Am I reading that right?
Yes. Yes, I haven't been on anybody. We have roofing projects, H E projects. We're bonuses, we set the chat, we're coming through, there's some technology, process and follow them there. But some of the intercon systems that we're trying, pardon, that are, that are necessary to come together, that will be there. We don't allocate that in projects. We get, I said, we get roofing hits in for the two schools. We have a, we have a private, that's a system.
So if I understand this, all the things I'm seeing in this talk. Is it covered in that seven?
No. That's an addition to what you're seeing in the document. Those are not covered.
This is a different thing.
Those are different things. Some of those, if they come in under beer, they get, they get up like that as we can pull.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Dr. Daley told me to be there again before he started the meeting, he said, listen, only thing you got to do is just be okay with me, okay?
We have, we have different perspectives. I'm sure Mr. Daley will do everything he can to get, working with you, working with you to do his best for the kids. We have the school system, we appreciate it.
I want to say that on behalf of the board, first of all, I'm asking, can the board members have anything they want to say? My board. Well, nah, I just want to say that I really appreciate the board of education, Dr. Daley, and staff providing us this presentation that's going to help us a lot as we move forward. We have to go back and adjust some of this stuff and each and every one of your board members been asleep, looking at this stuff, woke up, played at night, looking at it. We'll have opportunity to go back and, and look there. Great presentation, a lot of information. And we can see the slight increase from last year and the last three, four years. Everything is going up. Everything costs a lot more than it did last year, even if you're shopping in the stores or whatever. So we, it'll take that into consideration. I just wanted to say to Mr. Daley, I really appreciate the relationship that the school board had with Martin County, board commissioners, I think I was telling it, it's white, that the chair department and the board of education, our relationship is greater than so many counties in the state of North Carolina. We work hard to keep it that way. I get, I get opportunity to hear from other counties. I was just at board of directors meeting in Newman this past weekend. And looking at some issues that I know there's a deal out there, they're not there for quite some time, they're still looking at it. Whereas the charter school, you know, they're pushing for, sit down in a room like this and come to their capital, we feel there right over there. And you guys know more about that than I do, but you know, these are some of the things that we have to take into consideration. And I know it's pretty hard when you have a bottom of the kids and whatever the number may be as years go on and pulling away from the school. But at the same time, you still have to, a lot of funding comes out of it. So, well, hanging here and continuing to work together. Young man here and I, we go, we go back. How much older he is, but that we played in sandboxes, same time. But I just want to say thank you to, thank you staff, thank you Dr. Daley, thank you Dr. White. Opportunity to come in. And most of all, great bravery, I think that's what it's all about. They need to sit down and have a good meal and need to prepare business at hand, but it's all about our children, you know, providing. You have a great facility here, and now this is a board and continue to develop, use all of those great things that you have in place. That's what I have to say.
School board members have anything that we should bring up tonight? Need a motion to adjourn from school. Motion out of second to adjourn to a school board meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, aye. Do the board adjourn. I ask for a motion for commission to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. I have a second. All those in the day, let me know when you're saying aye.
Aye.